I'd like to welcome everyone and welcome my fellow supervisors. We do have a quorum, six of seven voting members are present, so that takes care of item B. Item C on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. So if you'll stand with me. Let us pray. Lord our Father, our Savior and our Redeemer, keep a watchful eye over us and our families and those whose lives are connected to ours tonight and forevermore. Be with us, give us traveling mercies and let this foredo the service of the people. And we ask that everyone stay well and keep a watchful eye over us. And it's in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item D, approval of the agenda as amended. And we're using the electronic voting board, so is there a motion on that?
There's a motion.
Is there a second? Second, excuse me, the motion has been made by Supervisor Matthew, seconded by Supervisor Davis to approve the agenda as amended. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your votes, aye. Those opposed, no. Of all the supervisors voted. And that's unanimous, six to zero. The next item is approval of the minutes, item E. Is there a motion on that?
There's a motion.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, seconded by Supervisor Allen to approve the minutes as presented. Does anyone have any questions on that? All right, please record your votes, aye. Those opposed, no. And that decision is unanimous, six to zero. The next item is approval of the claims, item F. Motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Allen to approve the claims as presented. Any questions on that? If not, please record your votes, aye. Those opposed, no. And that motion carries six to zero. In terms of announcements, I've been asked to read one announcement from Ms. Rhonda Austin. Ms. Austin states the following from Forward 2020. She is writing to invite the community to the third annual Juneteenth celebration here in Buckingham. The event was, is being presented by Forward 2020 and will take place on Saturday, June 18th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Straight Street. Forward 2020 was organized around the mission of moving with purpose and passion to be agents of change by providing educational, social opportunities to empower, educate and engage our community. At the Juneteenth celebration, there will be a vendor market, voter registration drive and other activities, which include gospel singing, historical reflections, along with games for children and adults. And there will be various vendors. Again, that is on Saturday, June the 18th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Straight Street. And then on this coming Saturday at 12 o'clock is the Anti-Litter Task Force Celebration for those who have been picking up the over 150 bags, cleaning up our county. And that's at 12 o'clock this Saturday at Lee Way, that is part of May Fest. Okay, that concludes announcements. The next item is H, excuse me, public comments. Just a reminder that you do get three minutes, so we can listen to your opinions and take those into consideration. Three minutes for individuals and groups do get five minutes. So Ms. Lan, who do we have signed up first, please?
We have six, Patty Bailey, District Four.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Bailey.
Good evening. My name is Patty Adams Bailey. I reside in District Four at 12655 West James Anderson Highway. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Buckingham Village Preservation Group, a 501(c)(3), to speak in favor of the speed readers for the Courthouse Village. I serve as the president of this group. Unfortunately, not all traffic adheres to the 35 mile an hour speed limit in the village. Speeding is a definite problem. Safety is and should be a priority for the people who live, work and visit within the village, given the number of homes, businesses, government offices and museums located within the village. Route 60 is the primary east-west corridor in the county with a significant amount of daily traffic. Studies have shown that drivers will slow down when alerted by the readers. One of the objectives of our group is traffic calming and safety. We have worked with the Sheriff's Office and the Virginia State Police on the issue of traffic speeding occurring in the courthouse area. Both the Sheriff's Office and the State Police have responded, but with their resources spread throughout the county, they are not able to constantly monitor the speeding in the village. For a while, the Sheriff's Office placed a vehicle, a department vehicle, in the courthouse area, and we provided a mannequin for the vehicle. This vehicle served as a strong deterrent to the speeding and drew a lot of attention. Then the new electronic display board was placed at the west end of the village. This too served to slow the traffic through the village. These have been temporary solutions. There is a definite need to have speed readers permanently posted on each end of the courthouse village, and our group would appreciate the board's support for these speed readers. Thank you for listening and for your hard work and your support.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Lan, who do we have signed up next?
Teresa McManus, District Two.
Welcome, Ms. McManus. Thank you for being here.
Not calling me by Annie Oakley. District Two, my supervisor IC isn't here.
I read usually the Declaration of Independence, but you don't listen to me when I do that. So I thought I would read to you something from the Virginia. Our Bill of Rights, Article One, Section Two states, "The people are the source of power, that all power vested in and consequently derived from the people. That magistrates are the trustees of the servants and that at all times amenable to them." So let's talk about pay raises for the school. Let's talk about failed businesses. Our school system is a failed system. We're not even accredited, but we are going to give across the board a 5% pay raise. What business in their right mind would promote a pay raise to a failed business? Have you talked to many of our seniors who graduate from high school? They can't hold an intelligent conversation. They can't read. I've been to restaurants where they can't read. They can't talk. They are horrible. But let's give a pay raise across the board to the teachers. We're going to have personal property increase because all our used, our old vehicles have gone up in price. I'd like to talk about some of the school, the school bus drivers. How come they get cars that I'm paying the gas? I'm paying the maintenance. Why don't you get them and sell them to make money to put back into the Commonwealth, into back into Buckingham? Let's talk about the solar panels. They're supposed to generate money. Oh, by the way, our governor doesn't think they're good for us, but we voted for them. He stated that they poison the water, that they poison the counties that they're in, but we voted for them anyway? We don't really care about the people. You're not our stewards, are you? Where's the revenue from them to make our taxes go down? You ever read history? You know what happened during, before the Great Depression with Hoover? He just put more taxes on the people, levied more taxes, increased their property values, increased all their taxes. What happened? A Great Depression arrived. People in this county are feeling their, their problems in the gas station, in the grocery store, and yet you think that we all want you to sit here and to raise our taxes. Would be nice if somebody paid attention. You don't even pay attention, Mr. Davis. Would be nice if you looked up and at least listened. It is ridiculous what is going on here. We voted you in to take care of us. We voted you in to represent us. You don't represent us. You represent your interests. You represent the good old boys. We're not good old boys here. We're people in your county, in your community that have come back. We need to be represented. I'd like to know, oh, let's talk about the high-speed internet. Beam's gone because we can't get all the grants that are coming into the county? Not one person in my area is going to get any high-speed internet.
McManus, if you'll conclude very quickly, please.
I will.
Time is expired. Very quickly, one more sentence.
I just want to know. You need to cut your fat, and the fat's not by getting more money from the community. You need to look at yourself.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McManus. Who do we have next, Ms. Land?
Joseph Anthony, District Four.
Good evening, sir.
Jordan, supervisors, everybody. I walk on these roads. Joe Anthony's my name. I live at 39770 Kill Road here in Maysville. And speeding as a pedestrian is a concern to me every day. So I'm in favor of the speed readers that are proposed, and I support everything that Patty said so eloquently a few minutes ago. That's all I need to say. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Ms. Land, who do we have next?
David Ball, District Three.
Welcome, Mr. Ball.
Good evening. How you doing, Jordan? David Ball, District Three. First off, I'd like to thank the board for their support through the election board for helping to maintain Curdsville. I think Curdsville has been, and it's my intent to keep it, a viable part of our community. One of the things that we have been missing in the community so much has been the small business, and small business is the backbone of America. And I've heard about a number of big business opportunities, but I know we have an industrial park, but we don't have business. And what we need to do is start going out and looking for business. Find businesses and invite them here, encourage them to come locate their businesses here. Because if we don't have businesses, all this is going to be is a retirement community because there are a lot of people coming here to retire, to get away from the cities. Because now that COVID has changed the face of America, the fact that there's technology, although lacking here, technology gives them the ability to stay home, to be in the rural areas. They don't have to be in the cities. So this is an opportunity for the future. There's a lot of opportunity here if you embrace it. And I think that partnerships with other districts, talking to the urban centers, trying to find businesses that want to relocate, there are businesses that are relocating to this country, I mean, to Virginia. And if we can get them in Buckingham, that helps. I know we want to keep it rural, but we also need jobs because if we don't, we're going to have a lot of people that are going to come here. And a forecast that was done several years ago, published in the Seaville, said that this area would have a decrease over the last decade of population. However, by 2050, the population of Buckingham will more than double. And that's going to be from people from places like Charlottesville that are leaving Charlottesville, Richmond, maybe even Lynchburg, but also the DC metropolitan area. So we need to prepare for those people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball.
Kenny Sink, District Four.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Kenny Sink. I'm here about the speed readers, and I represent Preservation Buckingham, which is also a 501(c)(3) here in the county. And our goal is promoting preservation of historic buildings and sites here in the county. Several of the board members are here, and we're all residents here in the courthouse, the historic district. And I've spoken with Jordan about this for years regarding the speed readers. And in fact, several years ago, I had one sitting in my front yard. It was borrowed from Cumberland County until it ran out of, until it ran out of juice. But they were, it was very effective. I mean, I could stand down the street down there and just watch the brake lights come on when people came into town and saw that and they saw their speed registered. So it seemed very effective to me. My house is Rose Terrace, which is on the other end of town. It was built in 1780. It's one of the historic houses here. It's in the curve in the road, just past the courthouse building. It's right at the top of the hill, so I see a lot of things as far as the traffic goes here in town. And there's two things that mostly that concern me about what's going on. And one is vehicles tend to speed up, cars, trucks, anything. Speeds up going west on 60 when they pass the courthouse because they know around the bend in the road, it's a 55 mile an hour zone. So usually by the time, not everybody, but a lot of the cars get there and they're 45 miles an hour. And what really concerns me more than anything about it are the horse-drawn wagons that go down in that corner, and I'm just concerned somebody's going to get wiped out one day down there. From the standpoint of preservation, my house, of course, as I said, is one of the historic houses here. And the vehicles, a lot of the vehicles here, whether it's trucks or these SUVs that are jacked up in the front with the open pipes on the back. I personally am not concerned about noise, but I'm concerned about the rattling that it creates. And I can tell you, I grew up next to an airport and it wasn't anywhere near this bad. Because what, what the rattling does, it, it creates cracks in the mortar and the plaster on the inside of the house. And I've experienced this myself. I can almost stand there sometimes and watch the cracks form, and I keep repairing it over and over again. And I've seen this problem also, by the way, on other houses that I've worked on here, here at the courthouse. Probably the worst thing that it does, though, is the slate on these roofs. If anybody's familiar with how these old roofs, 200 and some years ago, they have no sub-roofing in them like, like houses do now. Basically, I can, I had to cut a hole in my ceiling and go up. I can see the slate from underneath. So if the rattling from the vehicle shifts the slate even slightly, you've got a leak. And it comes down.
If you conclude, yes, sir.
And what's that?
I said your time's up, but if you want to conclude very quickly.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, I'm glad that the board's taking this up. I hope it gets approved. And it's not a final answer, but I think it really is a large step in trying to get traffic under control here in town, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sink.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
McCarthy Goss, District Four.
And Ms. Land, Mr. Goss represents a group, so that'll be five minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I was going to try to get with the times and use my phone to read this. The older I get, the more challenging it is. So I have my backup right here. Hello, esteemed members of the board. My name is McCarthy Goss, and I am here to talk about straight street renovations. But first, on the, on the behalf of Forward 2020, we would like to acknowledge the invitation that was sent out to all of you to attend our third annual Juneteenth celebration. And actually, our first celebration was held at the Edmondson Farm, and it was such a beautiful location. And I always like to give thanks to them because it was such a nice event. Thank you so much. We hope you take the time to come out and enjoy the festivities. This year, we have added a health section, which includes UVA Health, who will discuss and educate the citizens of Buckingham County on challenges and pitfalls of healthcare. We need a clear understanding of inward, in-network versus out-of-network. Sometimes this can get really confusing, and we need to know how that affects your bottom line. You know, studies reflect that Buckingham falls in the lower percentile when it comes to healthcare. UVA Health Initiatives wants to help change that narrative, which falls in line of what Forward 2020 wants to do. Now, transitioning to the renovations. Having access to water is paramount to the success and vitality of any community, particularly a community center, and Straight Street is no different. Because of our Juneteenth festival, Straight Street was awarded a grant to address the water insecurities. Circap was a vendor at our festival last year, and they saw the need for this community center because they believe that water is life. Water is life. And on May 1st, the process of breathing life back in the Straight Street began, so literally this month. We began the renovations on Straight Street, putting in bathrooms, showers, toilet stools, you know, the whole nine yards. But we need your help financially with connecting the main water supply to the Straight Street supply. With your help, we can strive to improve the conditions of this local community center that can be utilized by all citizens of Buckingham County. With the end goal of providing services for all county residents. There is a, a need in the county for expanded after-school educational resources, and this location could be used to foster educational activities, health initiatives, and since it is centrally located, it could be used as an emergency shelter, as was needed this winter because a lot of the power went out in Buckingham County. You know, the winter storms were bad, so thank you for your consideration in working towards a common goal of making Buckingham the best it could be for all of our citizens. Please don't hesitate to contact us if you have any questions. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for listening. We got through that, and I used my phone. Bit challenging, but thank you so much. So if you have any questions for me now?
Thank you, Mr. Goss.
All right. Thank you for listening.
I think at one time the board agreed to help as the project moved forward, so I think the board's still in a position to do that.
And it is now moving forward, thank goodness, because Circap was so kind and reached out to us, so. And they'll be back as a vendor this year, and hopefully we'll have some significant process, progress, so they can actually see the work going on.
Good news.
A figure for the...
Yes, sir. The county gave us a figure years ago, and that figure was, I think, was $11,000, and that was before the pandemic. So, you know.
Changed.
Everything has definitely changed, so if the county could come back out and do another figure, because...
Are you willing to help the county some on that fee? Or is that you want it all to be county donated? Is that what you're driving in?
Whatever works, we can work with. We appreciate you even giving us the time and listening and trying to make something happen. Because the fees went up so much, the project on Straight Street, you know, lumber now cost an arm and a leg. So, but we're trying to get through it, we will get through it. But the first phase of this process has begun, and we intend on getting this done.
Thank you, good to hear.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goss.
Take care.
And that is all we have signed up.
Thank you, Ms. Land. So the next item is our presentations. The first one is a presentation of appreciation to Central Virginia Health Services staff for their dedication during the COVID-19 pandemic. And then after that, we will do the Buckingham County Health Department staff. So if the Central Virginia Health Services staff would please join me at the podium for this presentation, please, and then we'll do the Health Department. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I thank you all for being here. Central Virginia Health Services played a key role in testing, getting vaccinations out and just keeping our, our community healthy. According to what I've got here, you all have administered 13,385 COVID-19 tests in the county and have given out more than 8,201 vaccines. And you all have a lot of employees locally that work in the county, that live in the county. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, thank you all for keeping our county healthy, continuing to grow, and I think y'all have another location opening soon, it sounds like. Is it?
We have a news.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Does the board have anything to say? Does any board member want to add anything to that? Hey, now the Buckingham County Health Department. So on behalf of the board, thank you all for being here. Thank you all for helping keep our community safe in the county. I know that you all too have, have, in terms of vaccinations, more than 4,000. That, that's quite a big number. And of course, testing, setting up vaccination clinics, and again, partnering with the many entities, including the county, Piedmont Senior Resources, Wild Work and the many other nonprofits. So on behalf of the County of Buckingham and the Board of Supervisors, this plaque is to be given to you all to show our appreciation for the compassion and dedication of your staff during the pandemic. And you all have been a great blessing to the citizens of the county, so congratulations. Thank you. Okay, the next item is I three. And I don't see anyone from the Buckingham County varsity girls' basketball team here. So what we're going to do is we'll continue that until the next month, if that's okay with the board. The next item is I four. Ted Rick with Jaunt. He's the CEO of Jaunt Transit Service to give us an update with regards to ridership and others. So welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Ted Rick. I've been the CEO of Jaunt for about six months now. I started in December, and it's very, it's nice to be here to, to finally meet you all in person. I have a little bit of a slideshow here. Think you have copies of the presentation?
We do. The staff is going to pull that up, and we do have copies. It's, let's see. I four. Yes, sir, we do. Item I four in the board packet.
Thank you. All right. Can you go to the next slide, please? As a reminder, Jaunt's role is to provide transportation services to Buckingham County. But really, more than that, we see our job is to provide opportunities for people to be independent, to earn a living, get an education, access medical services. The very fabric of our lives that we all take for granted, we provide that to many people here in the county. Next slide. We actually provide two services, which are work-oriented, employment-oriented services. They both originate here in Buckingham, and they go to Charlottesville, primarily UVA, and as well as Pantops area and, and the area just north on US 29, the commercial district up there. We provide two trips in the morning, one on each of the routes, and then two trips in the afternoon, one on each as well. It's very much a well-utilized services, primarily serving people who want to go to work up in the, up in Charlottesville. Buckingham is, has a unique reputation, whereas most areas of the county or of the, of the country, and including our own service area, ridership has kind of stayed stable during the pandemic. In many parts of our service area, and of course, the country in general, ridership took a nosedive during the onset of the pandemic. And the red line, if you can make that out on the graphic, is our current year. And in some ways, we're running kind of ahead of where we've been for the last two years. So I think that speaks very well to the, the need for the services and how well utilized they are in the, in the county. Next one. Again, I mentioned we have two bus routes. The first one is the east route. That's the top line on this graphic. And again, that's been holding fairly steady, a little bit of a drop over during the, the winter. And then the red line, which is serving the northern area of our, of the US 29 corridor, has been steadily increasing as well. So we're very happy to see that. Hopefully, we could, at some point, provide more service. I'm sure there's more demand for services than, than we are providing today. We are in the middle of a three-to-five-year planning process. We're partnering with the Department of Rail and Public Transit, looking at what our services should be over the next three to five years. And hopefully, that gives us an idea as to what kind of investments are needed in the, in the community. We are working with Albemarle County and UVA to help fund some of the services that originate here in Buckingham. After all, your workers are going up there to serve a need, and perhaps there's an opportunity for them to help with the investment that's being made here in the county. We're also looking at other opportunities to improve our services. One is a, a new mode of services, which we call microtransit. It's kind of an Uber for transit, where you can call and get immediate service. We would like to be able to provide people with more access on a spontaneous basis. The services that I showed you have a fixed time and a fixed schedule. Therefore, it requires people to adapt to that. Microtransit adapts to the individual instead of them adapting to the service. The gentleman before me was using his smartphone. There are smartphone applications for transit to track your bus and to pay fares. Now, we're a free, a fare-free system for the time being. But if we should reintroduce fares, smartphones have applications that we can use to not only plan your trip, but pay for your trip, and we're look, we'll be looking at those as well. We'll also be exploring alternative fuel vehicles. We don't know if electric, electric vehicles is in our future, but we'll certainly be taking a look at that. And finally, we'd like to improve our, our community outreach. We like to come before you, not just to ask for money, but to tell you how we're doing. And also focus more on improving our customer satisfaction through surveys and, and other interactions. Want to go to the last slide? If you have any questions or comments about services, this is time to ask.
Does any board member have any questions for, for the gentleman, Mr. Rick? No, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Moving on with the agenda, our next item is item J, VDOT Road Matters. Mr. Frederick is here with us to, to update us with VDOT matters, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman and board, thank you for having me. Administrator Carter reached out to me last week about traffic calming devices. So people referring to him as speed readers, that is, that is a traffic calming device. So I see it later on the agenda, but I feel like we could talk about it now. Because of my conversations with him, I reached out to traffic engineering. And a lot of people want those things, like in neighborhoods, and, you know, places where it's very low speed limit, kids out, you know, in yards. So due to a high number of requests, there is a process to get those installed at somebody else's expense. You just get a permit to get it placed. But I found out last week that some of them are installed by VDOT. So a primary route such as 60 or 15 is certainly something that VDOT would have an interest in helping with. But what they told me is a, a formal request from the county to study it and possibly have it installed would get the ball rolling on that. So I was talking to Administrator Carl, maybe with the board's support, like a letter from the county to, to just request, you know, a speed reader, so to speak. I, I sent him the manual on traffic calming, so maybe look through that and see exactly what you guys are thinking about, and put that in the request and send it to us.
Is that okay with, with the board to look into that?
I think it's a consensus that you want me to do that, so that's fine.
I think we're good with that. Thank you for looking into that.
And then, so that's further in the presentation, but I feel like we covered that now. I also saw on here tires on private property. That doesn't involve VDOT, doesn't. Okay, good.
Not at will.
I'm gonna ignore that. We'll just go back to the regular update.
Not unless you're gonna pick them up.
So got kind of a short update. We've been working on Payne's Pond Road. That's on the rural rustic six-year plan. We got a lot of the, the grading and drainage work done on Wednesday. You know, as long as things go according to schedule. And right now, we've got pretty good weather, so we're planning to stay on schedule. We're gonna be starting to put the base stone down on Payne's Pond. That's gonna take us about three weeks to get the base stone put down. At that time, we'll be ready to shoot the surface, the two layers of surface treatment. So we have a specialty crew put together that's doing surface treatment. They're heading to Prince Edward County this week to do a rural rustic there. So it's some people from Buckingham, some people from Cumberland, and Prince Edward Crew banded together to shoot them all. So when they get done in Prince Edward, they're heading for Red Road to do the surface there.
Good news.
And then by the time they get done with that, they'll be going to Payne's Pond. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, our rural rustics for this county. We've been handling our normal work orders as they come in. I see some trees down on 15. I think those are in one of the more recent storms. I didn't see those the last time I was up here, so. But we're gonna get those. Just, you know, all the normal routine things we've been doing is what we're gonna be focused on as well. The other thing I just felt like I'd mentioned, you reached out to me about some tires on Fannie White Road. And I don't know if we got them yet or not, but we're planning to go pick them up.
Thank you. It's good news.
I also just want to thank you for your work with the anti-litter task force, so.
Well, it's a board effort, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate that.
And then we're about ready to start mowing again. And we have a contractor doing a portion of that in Prince Edward County. They're, they're required by contract to pick up the litter before they mow, so they won't be shredding it up. And we're gonna try to do the same thing on our routes that we mow, so hopefully we won't have an issue this year. So that kind of wraps up my update. Do you guys just want to transition into the six-year plan?
Well, but let me ask if any board members have any issues with any roads in their district. So Supervisor Allen, we'll go down the line here. Do you have any issues with, with VDOT road issues you want to relate?
Um, not really with the, well, on 15, going from Dillon down, down the road. I know it's a little dippy in the road. We talked about that last time, but how are the pine trees down there that we got? Was most of them pine trees at the old gravel pile down there?
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up. Those came down in the storm we had in, back in January, and it's, uh, we're gonna have a, a contractor come in with a tub grinder and grind it all up, and he's responsible to remove, you know, take everything with him when he's done. So it was out for bid last week. I'm not sure if the bid time has closed yet or not, but those will be gone in the very near future. Once, once we award it to a contractor, I think they have 60 days to, to grind it up and get it gone, so.
We've got another month and a half.
I mean, that's kind of quick by my standards, but it's been there a while. It feels like forever sometimes, but it'll be gone soon.
Okay.
Supervisor Brunt?
How about Ivy Road? Where y'all will serve that?
Uh, is that in the plan that we're about to talk about? I believe it is.
I'll put all the base stone all down, but.
Yeah, so that'll be in the mix. I was talking to them earlier, and they didn't mention it. It's gotta be right in there with Red Road and Payne's Pond, so. Sorry, I forgot the, I, I left that one out while I was talking earlier, but that, that one's so high on the list. It'll be in the near future.
You good Supervisor Brunt? You good? Supervisor Matthews?
Yes, sir. I've had two complaints, Mr. Frederick, on Mill Road, which is right here on 15 between Spouses Corner and Curdsville to the left, going back towards, on the south direction. So on dust, and I know we had a rain last week, but prior to that, we had some pretty dry weather. And I think it's starting to washboard pretty bad from what I've heard from, from the citizens on that road.
Okay. I'll wait for dust. When it gets dry, we treat with the calcium chloride. We, we do that up to two times a year. If you do it, the way it works is it holds the moisture in the road. It's the way the chemistry of it works. But if you use too much of it, you'll make the road get a problem with being too muddy, so. So I'll see if we're ready to treat that again, and, and we'll certainly take care of the washboard and by machine it.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Chambers, any VDOT road issues?
I already talked to Mr. Frederick.
Okay, for the Mayesville District, Mr. Frederick, I know that, and I brought this up troubles, or several times, but Troublesome Creek Road, and I know it's just not Troublesome Creek Road, but it looks like tanks have drawn down it. It is that crumbling. If y'all could please do some, dump something, because that's a cut-through road. It's a, really a high-volume road.
I'll look at it again. It, it does kind of have an alligator cracking.
It does.
It's, it seems like otherwise it's staying together pretty well.
Otherwise, but it's cracking up in some places.
Yeah, so.
And then we communicated about the tires on Fannie White Road that have been dumped. And I noticed yesterday there's a fallen tree on 60 East. If a big wide automobile catches it, something's going, something, something bad's gonna go down, so.
Yeah, I'll look at that, yeah.
That's all I have right now. Supervisor Davis, anything with, with regards to road maintenance?
Yes, 15 from Brimmo Bridge to Dyna Mills, it's just getting worse and worse and worse all the time. It's like you're riding on a washboard.
Okay, yeah. I just rode through there recently myself. I, I believe that's on the schedule, and I think it's supposed to be done soon, but I don't have that with me, and I can't remember where it exactly lands. But I'll, next month, I'll let you know with timeframe on that.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. So now what we're gonna do, Mr. Frederick, is transition to item K, public hearing. The VDOT K1, the VDOT Secondary Six-Year Road Improvement Plan for fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '28. And I know we've met about that, so did you quickly want to explain that? And then we'll open the public hearing, sir.
Yes, sir. So we had a work session. I forget whether it was one or two months ago, but this draft plan, I've put a copy of it on the, right in front of your monitors there for each of you. You may already have it in your packet. The, I was able to capture a lot of the stuff we talked about in our work session in this draft plan. I think the only thing I didn't get was Mr. Matthews brought up Loop Road.
Yes.
And I actually rode that, and it's already surfaced, but it's in bad shape. So I need to find out when we can get that on a schedule, just to do routine maintenance on it, get a new surface put down. But, and there was one or two potholes. I believe I got those filled since then, so. But, but everything else is on here. I can read through the way this works. It's a six-year plan, so the stuff that was put on here years ago has worked its way up to the top. We always build them in order, from what's on the top of the list, working our way down, so. Ivy Road, which was just brought up a minute ago, is actually at the top of the list, Route 702. Estimated cost of that work is $285,000. After that is Hunting Shack Road, estimated cost of $90,000. Hunter's Road, Route 768, has an estimated cost of $195,000. Payne's Pond Road has an estimated cost of $556,000. That's one of the longer routes down the list, and it's a good project to get down. And then after that's Red Road, Route 630. It has an estimated cost of $180,000. And one of the reasons that's a little funny feeling this year is because we jumped Red Road up into another roots place last year, if you can remember. So things kind of feel more like they, I got, my head got out of order on all these because it was further in the list before, but now we're back just going in order again. Route 689 Crescent Road has an estimated cost of $67,500. And where, where the southern end of Crescent Road ties in, there's a little bit of a hump there. We're actually gonna grade that down and fix the intersection a little bit when we do it. We're gonna, it's gonna be kind of a safety improvement mixed in with just putting a hard surface down on that road, so. I'm looking forward to doing that one. Route 756 is after that. Wise Ridge Road has an estimated cost of $97,500. Route 7673, Virginia Mill Road, estimated cost $45,000. And Route. Let's see here, I got. Page has got. Pages got off on Route. Seven thirty-nine, uh, has an estimated cost of ninety thousand dollars. That's Blackwell Road. Then Route six ninety-three Wildland Road has an estimated cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. Route six twenty Mill Road, estimated cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Route six twenty-seven Warren Ferry Road has an estimated cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. Route seven forty Firehouse Road, estimated cost of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Route seven sixty-six Old Fort Road has an estimated cost of forty-three thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, Route seven fourteen Pembleton Road, estimated cost of ninety-six thousand dollars. Route seven seventy-eight Boulevard Road, estimated cost of two hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars. Uh, Route eight twenty Avon Road, uh, estimated cost fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. Route seven oh five Maxi's Road, estimated cost of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Route six oh eight Elkin Road, uh, estimated cost three hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, Route seven eighty Hilltop Road, estimated cost of forty thousand dollars. Route seven ninety Plantation Road, estimated cost of eighty thousand dollars. Route seven thirteen Happy Hollow Road, estimated cost of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Another section of Elkin Road, six oh eight, is on here with an estimated cost of two hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars.
Mr. Frederick, could I ask a question about that? That's in Supervisor Matthews' district. So, under this plan, are y'all gonna do half and half like Red Road, apply that to Elkin Road?
Um, that's the way it would play out if we just go in order. I really don't like doing that. Kinda learned our lesson on Red Road, but they're far enough out in the plan where we can adjust that next year, if we would like to. But the, the, the list kinda gets put together at the pleasure of the board, so. If, if you guys wanna approve it the way, or vote on it the way it is, or if you'd like me to revise it, and we can prove it later would be our two options tonight, but we can talk about that in a minute.
Finish this up.
Uh, and then Route eight oh one Hope Road, uh, estimated cost twelve thousand six hundred. That's a very short road, just a tenth of a mile. Route six sixty-four Sycamore Creek Road, estimated cost of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Route eight oh four Shady Road, estimated cost of forty-six thousand two hundred. Uh, Route six forty-nine Mulberry Grove Road, uh, estimated cost of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then after that, let me make sure I. There's just some regular call centers here. The, uh, we have, uh, the next two blocks, I'm thinking, it just says fiscal year twenty-seven Buckingham County Unpaved Road Projects. There was a point where they were doing it in a different format, and I believe these next two blocks are just, uh, like, should've been deleted. But then after that, we have the one that says nine 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 Buckingham Countywide Transportation Services. I believe that one is when, that you guys make a request for signage, we charge to that call center if it's on a secondary route. And then the, or the, that's actually at the very bottom of the list, the Traffic Services. And then on the last page there, Buckingham Countywide Engineering and Survey. If we have to do survey for one of these routes, which is rare, uh, if, you know, something would happen that we'd have to send surveyors out, we would charge to that one, the four thousand five call center. Um, then we also have one for right-of-way, which, uh, I've never seen that charged to in any of the counties I manage. Uh, if you were to have to acquire right-of-way, we normally don't take on a project that we would have to do that. And then the last one is Drainage Improvements, which, there's times where we've used that to install like a, a culvert or something on a secondary route, but, but that's something we do every day. But those, so those are call centers at the back of the list. Every county has those. So I don't know if you guys have comments for me on this, or?
Are there any questions for Mr. Frederick before we open the public hearing? Supervisor Allen?
Yeah, I had one. Uh, I thought we put Randolph Creek Road on it, but.
I thought so too, and Shade Tree.
Okay, I might've just missed it.
Randolph Creek Road, half of it's already done, goes over to Petersville.
Okay.
Oh, six tenths of a mile, it's not done, I think.
But I, it, it was, uh, on the far end list of the last time, but.
Where, if we talked about it at our work session, I tried to get everything that was discussed, but there was a certain point where I ran out of funding, and I know, uh, sometimes the wish list is longer than the funding will allow. I don't know if that was the case for those two.
Right, I, I, I don't know either. I'm just, I just know it was on the list, but I didn't.
Oh, it was on the list?
Right.
And then, Mr. Frederick, as you alluded to earlier, after we have our hearing, we can amend this if we want.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, you could, I guess you could, I was, what you're saying, you could approve it with amendments, or like?
We can change this a little bit, if the board desires that.
Yes, sir. It has to be, I have to get it in, we have to do it in the June meeting to get it in before the next fiscal year, so.
Understood.
It's not a necessity to get it done in the May meeting, but it has to get a resolution of some sort in June, if we wanna have a plan. We'll be forced to use what we had on file last year at that point.
Any other questions for Mr. Frederick before we open the public hearing about this? Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, declare that open. Uh, Ms. Land, do we have anyone signed up?
We have one, David Ball, District Three.
Okay, thank you for being here. You have three minutes.
Good evening, David Ball, District Three. I wanna thank Mr. Frederick and VDOT for all the help that they've been giving us at Curdsville, um, with a lot of things that, um, kinda got left in the past, and things that we've got planned to do in the future. But having said that, and having worked for VDOT at a time when, with VDOT, you didn't build it if you didn't take care of it, and that was, that was the rule. And that was the VDOT rule. And I don't travel all the roads, but particularly some roads like Buckingham Springs Road, it's terrible. Where VDOT has come in, and it, it, it's hard to describe exactly what they did, but all, in various locations, it looks like asphalt was just tossed down randomly in varying depths, and either compacted or left. But it reminds me of creek crossings. It's that rough. And I can only think of the wear and tear on vehicles, let alone how it can cause vehicles to have difficulty controlling, and would also put undue tear on vehicles to where it might cause, uh, citizens who drive on those roads to have to spend money to repair because of the condition of the road, and that's not acceptable. At least, when I was an employee with VDOT, that kind of condition was never acceptable. And I know this is not the only place, I mean, I see it across all the secondary, you know, various secondary roads, uh, that I've traveled around the county, which doesn't, doesn't look well, doesn't show well. If we brought the Commissioner of, of VDOT here, if we brought the Governor here, this is not what we want him to see. This is not the Buckingham County we wanna show off. So, I add to that, the fact that the issue's been brought up in the past. There are a lot of dead trees on the edge or in the right-of-way as you travel all these secondary roads. Those are potential hazards, hazards for the safety of anybody commuting on those roads. And that's serious, and I think those things need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. That being the case, only, Mr. Ball is the only speaker for that portion of the hearing. We'll close the public hearing, and, um, board members, what would your pleasure be with regards to the plan? In terms of approving or changing anything?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Brunt to approve the plan as presented. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your votes. Aye, those opposed, no. And that is unanimous, six to, six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, and we could always put Randolph Creek on next year when we do this. You know, just make it the next one you add.
Just check on to see what, what happened, where it's at. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Our next item is, uh, K two, case twenty-two dash SUP three hundred, owner applicant, Mr. Byler, uh, with regards to, uh, two fifty-seven Sprouse's Lane, purposes of a special use permit to operate a commercial sawmill. And, uh, before we open the public hearing, Ms. Edmiston, would you please address that, if you could?
Chairman, um, the case before you is, just as you'd mentioned, twenty-two SUP three hundred. Our landowner and applicant is Aaron Byler, and this property is located at two fifty-seven Sprouse's Lane, Dillon, Virginia, Tax Map one twenty-four parcel twelve. The parcel contains approximately one hundred and twenty-one point six-three acres, and it is in the Mayesville Magisterial District. It is currently A-one agricultural, and the applicant does wish to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a sawmill. As you know, the zoning ordinance does not permit a commercial sawmill as a permitted by right use in an A-one zoning district. However, within the A-one zoning district, a commercial sawmill may be permitted by the Board of Supervisors by way of a special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission and the Court. This ordinance, and this case came to the attention of the zoning administrator by way of a complaint after investigation and meeting with the landowner, it was discovered that a commercial sawmill was operating. This case was, of course, introduced to the Planning Commission, public hearing held. It was introduced to the Board of Supervisors last month. Mr. Byler, our landowner and applicant, is here and present with us this evening to address questions and concerns that should arise from the public hearing or the board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Um, any questions for Ms. Edmiston before we open the public hearing? Supervisor Allen?
Aren't you supposed to have a document that says the building was?
So, Mr. Allen, if you take a look on the conditions, number fifteen, the applicant, before he can operate, the list of fifteen conditions that have been set forth and reviewed by the Planning Commission and moved forward by way of recommendation to the board, it states that the applicant shall provide certification from a structural engineer regarding the construction design, safety, and structural integrity for usage as a commercial sawmill. So, that would have to be provided to our office.
Oh, that, that has, or has not?
That has not happened.
Any other questions?
Byler has something different tonight.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Ms. Land, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, we have two. Teresa McManus, District Two.
Welcome, Ms. McManus. You have three minutes, ma'am.
Wants to run a small sawmill. He wants to provide for his family. We are built on small businesses. We are built on sawmills in Buckingham County and forestry. We wanna deny it. I drove out there today. I drove up and down his driveway. I came to the main road. I timed someone going into the dip, coming out of the dip and going by. Have any of you done it?
Yes.
Yep. It's not that bad. We had other businesses there that had motocross going in and out on trailers and tractors. We didn't have a problem with that then. We didn't make them have to spend more money and do a new driveway. I don't understand why what's good for one is not good for the other. Why do we have to persecute people when they come into this county? Not just him, there's others of us. I was one of them. Seems anybody who does not, from this county, who comes in and wants to start a business, can start it, until they, somebody decides they don't like them anymore. And then you have to go through all of the paperwork, and you have to close your business down, and you have to pay all the fines, and you have to go in and you have to get the paperwork done. Come on, guys. We want small businesses. We want people to survive. These are good, honest people. The road's not that bad. It's not that hard, and his driveway is in great shape. Why should he have the expense of having to build another driveway?
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Land?
David Ball, District Three.
Uh, good evening again. David Ball, District Three. And I would tend to echo, um, previous speakers' statements. I think we need to encourage more small business. We need to work with them. I know the Amish community has come here from the areas of Ohio and Pennsylvania, where they're very strict on the Amish lifestyle. Coming here, they've had to adapt. They've had to adjust. They're used to a different lifestyle than we have, and they work very hard. They depend a lot on each other and themselves, and they don't ask a lot of the community. So I think we need to work with them, to support them, encourage them, and help them, because they are now part of our community, and we should treat them with respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball.
Ball?
So that, so that we're gonna close the, um, public hearing, and I know the applicant is here. So does any board member have any questions for Ms. Edmiston or the applicant before we take action? Supervisor Davis?
My question is, is the existing driveway, is that suitable for commercial use?
Are you talking about the existing on Sprouse's Lane? No, sir. VDOT did not approve that. It has exceeded its usage. The VDOT form, I believe, is in the packet, but it is not unapproved.
Site distance was the biggest deal they said they had.
Is that the only reason, or is it something else, other than site distance?
It's site distance, and you can take a look at what was submitted by VDOT. It also exceeds VDOT's guidelines for a private lane.
What pages is that on, Ms. Edmiston?
Went through it myself. Here we go, let's see. So if you'll look, it's actually page nine of the application. This was actually evaluated in January. It says, "Existing entrance does not meet minimum site distance requirements for the proposed application. Applicant has been issued a VDOT land use permit to construct a low-volume commercial entrance at an adjacent location that will satisfy those requirements. Applicant has been informed of risks created and legalities of continued use at the existing entrance."
I have a question of the applicant. If you, come down if you don't mind, sir. So we can hear you and catch your comments for the record. So, Mr. Byler, thank you for being here, first of all. Um, with regards to the road, I know that's been, that's on twenty in the Mayesville District, but with regards to the road, uh, do you have any objections to putting that road in?
Uh, if, I mean, if that's what it's gonna take, that's what we'll do. But I do question if it will make sense and if it is necessary.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any?
I have a question.
Supervisor Matthews, yes, sir.
This is for Ms. Edmiston. So, just for reasoning purposes, why would we, I, I'd like to get an explanation from you, why we, we require Mr. Byler to put in another driveway, other than the site distance, which is a safety issue?
Because the number one condition in these special use permits, so when someone wants to ask for, um, permit and the ability to operate something that's not permitted by right, then the board does have the responsibility to impose conditions to maintain safety and security of not only the zoning district, uh, but of all. and security of not only the zoning district, but of all citizens and passerby's through the particular area. So, one of the first conditions listed for the special use permit is that an applicant must adhere to all state, local, and federal guidelines. The state guideline is VDOT. We as a county do not go in and inspect the VDOT right-of-ways, their site distance, and those type of things, et cetera, that's left to a VDOT representative. So, one of the portions of the application is to ensure that traffic impact determination is or is not required, and if it is or is not, then what are the requirements that are imposed upon a state agency? This is required in all of our applications to ensure those safety.
Are we treating Mr. Byler any differently than we do anyone else in this county?
No, sir, everyone contacts, all applicants contact the VDOT office, and someone from the VDOT, um, office performs this inspection of their entrance to a proposed business.
So, do we tell?
Supervisor Matthews, yes, sir.
Do we tell VDOT how to engineer these projects?
No, sir, VDOT has their own set of standards.
Mr. Frederick, since you're still here, is, is that all accurate, since you are VDOT? Supervisor Matthews?
Yes, I, Mr. Byler, what, the majority of the traffic that's coming down your driveway, that's bringing, are there, are there logs coming to your facility? Is that, am I correct on that?
Yes, it would be logs coming in and lumber going out.
Finished material leaving, right?
Yes.
Is it tractor-trailer, is it a pickup, or what?
Uh, it's both. I mean, most, most of it is short trucks. But there is some eighteen, or has been some eighteen-wheeler's coming in. And if we continue, that, that will continue.
Okay.
Just, just for the record, I mean, that has discontinued. I'm not bringing any outside logs in currently.
Right now, but why, why is that?
Why, because I was told I can't continue to do that.
But for what, I mean, the rea, there is a reason for that, okay? Because you weren't in compliance.
Yeah, I wasn't being compliant, yes.
Okay, so, but that wasn't from the county, just let's make that clear.
Yes, that was from the county.
Well, it's from the VDOT, actually you weren't.
That was from the county.
Well, yeah, we, we had to stop you because you weren't in compliance, that's the whole thing. And you, until you get in compliance.
Yes, but that wasn't a VDOT thing at that point. I was told by Mrs. Edmiston that I need to cease my operations immediately because I'm not in compliance.
Just to interject, it was more or less VDOT and the county, but the county was going off of what VDOT said, not to quibble with the, with the, with the details here, but that.
We understand, I understand, but that's the point I'm getting at. Until you get in compliance, I mean, you're in violation of safety regulations across the county. So, it's not any different from you than it is from the guy next to you down the street. So, those things have to be met.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, all right, just to be clear.
But it, it's, it's my understanding that I can continue to cut timber off my own farm because there's no ordinance on that.
Yes.
So, that's what I'm doing till I can come into compliance.
Okay.
If, Ms. Edmiston, is that accurate, what the gentleman just said?
The way that the zoning ordinance states that a portable sawmill may be used on-site to, for example, all the winter storm, storm damage. It's not for the buying and selling of, of logs for a commercial business. So, if you have some downed trees and you need to clear that property, and maybe you want to make your own boards out of it and use it on your property, that's for on-site use for the timber on your property. But when you timber anything on your property and you're selling those logs or boards on and off, it constitutes a commercial sawmill. If the logs didn't come from you and you're selling them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Does any other board member have any question before we vote?
Can I have a, make a comment on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Byler.
Your ordinance on that says, and I quote, "Timber harvesting, which may include temporary chipping, sawmills may used only for cutting timber on-site." That's all you have on your ordinance regarding that.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
What's your point? What, what is your?
Well, Nikki was saying that, she called it portable sawmills and that, whatever y'all say.
I said, "Commercial sawmill." Anytime you're using something for commercial or retail gain, anything that's associated to that particular activity does require a special use permit. So, you can cut on your land all day long with a portable sawmill, as long as you're not selling them off of your property.
So, if he sells?
Supervisor Allen, yes, sir.
So, if he sells the wood off to somebody else instead of using it himself?
That's commercial.
That's already commercial. It doesn't matter if he got people coming in, bringing him logs on tractor-trailers or not.
So, what's, I mean, what's the difference, really? I mean, I, I thought we had an understanding.
Mr. Byler, may I interject? What we're going to do?
Three months ago, we had a conversation, you called me to tell me that you were not going to operate in violation of the zoning ordinance, that any timbering that you were going to do was going to be just for yourself, sole purposes of taking care of your own timber for you on your property. Is that not the case?
No, I think we misunderstood each other there.
No, it was pretty clear when you contacted me, but please go into detail.
Okay, Mr. Byler, wrap it up, because we're going to vote, and we're not going to.
Go ahead and finish.
Finish talking.
All right, he's fine, just, we just.
This is a public.
Who am I talking to now?
Yeah, it's fine, you're fine, just.
Go ahead, Mr. Byler.
Okay, where, where was that, or who, who am I talking to?
All of us.
Everybody talking at one time, disrespecting.
It was my understanding that I can cut my own timber off my own farm, run it through my mill, and I'm not in violation with the county. And three years ago, I approached the county, told them what I'd like to do. I'd like to set up a sawmill, focus on harvesting timber off my property. And I was told, "Go ahead." So, that's what I did. A year or so later, I started buying in a few outside logs. Unbeknownst to myself, I was in violation, I didn't know that. So, that continued for a couple of years, until I got a call from Mrs. Edmiston, say, basically saying I need to cease operations immediately. So, anyway, uh, okay, so I was willing to, you know, whatever we need to do to come into compliance. So, I thought the conversation that we had multiple times was, can I cut, keep cutting my own timber off the farm as I had previously been doing? And it was my understanding that I can do that. And some of you supervisors had told me that as well. So, here we are, that's what I'm doing, but I'd like to come into compliance so I can start buying logs in again. That, that's what I'm here for.
I think the misunderstanding was a, a commercial operation versus a private use only, which is your land on your property using your timber. When you start selling it or taking it somewhere else, it becomes a commercial operation at that point in time.
Okay, is there any difference in selling logs or chips?
They're all timber-related activities. So, if you're selling it off of your property, and you're not using the timber or the chips or the logs or the boards for just you, that is not private use. That would constitute a commercial use.
So, every timber operation in the county is in violation, that's selling logs or chips?
No, sir, if they're in the correct zone for that, or they're grandfathered, or they have sought a special use permit, then they would be in compliance.
Any other questions from the board?
Which, which other ones were you talking about now?
I'm talking about all these timber operations in the county, all these cutovers, hundreds of acres that get cleared, that chipped, or, you know, whatever. Are they in violation? They don't have a special use permit. And they're not using the logs and the chips for their end use.
They're chipping it up and selling them?
Right, that's my point.
But they're, they're buying them from somebody else.
Do you have a question, Supervisor?
Against a commercial sawmill, that's two different things.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's under agriculture.
Right.
Any other questions?
So, what are you hitting there by getting the new road put in for the operating?
Part of the discussion, yeah, yes, sir.
Have, Ms. Edwards, have VDOT approved the entrance you got in there, the new one?
Yes, sir, and this application, it lets you know that, that this proposed site on Route twenty is what's been approved by VDOT. They've issued a VDOT land use permit to construct that low-volume commercial entrance at the location, the adjacent location on twenty. That will satisfy the requirements that VDOT has set forward.
Well, I guess we got to approve it with that there.
It would be approved using the new entrance on Route twenty.
Yeah, what I'm saying, the new entrance, okay.
You know, yeah, he's got a thing on here that shows what he's got to make, what he's got.
You're good with that, Mr. Byler?
If that's what it's going to take, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
You got to make that and, and get that approval from the building, whatever.
Yeah, and, uh, Mrs. Edmiston had mentioned something about a letter. I do have something here, I mean, can I give that to you now, or is that something that?
If you have a letter, yes, sir, I know that the plans were there, and I spoke with the building inspector to make sure that he didn't have anything for your case before this meeting, so if that's your letter.
Here it is for what it's worth, I don't know if it's going to satisfy you or not. That's, that's what he.
Will be reviewed by the building inspector.
That's what he gave me, so, you know, if you have to do something else there, I mean, I can get back to him and.
Okay, thank you for that.
What do you think?
Uh, because it's the structural integrity and it's the building, it will have to be reviewed by Tommy Ransson. We'll be back in touch with you and work with you.
So, can we put this on hold until next month to get that done?
I think we're going to take care of it, Mike.
We should vote on the road, shouldn't we? He, he in compliance to get the road put in, right?
That's one of his conditions, that's one of the fifteen conditions, yes, sir.
I don't think we should put that off.
So, what's your pleasure on this permit?
I make a motion that we're simply using the adjacent road and all that, we approve it.
Okay. Motion has been made by Supervisor Davis, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers to approve the permit with the conditions. Anyone have any questions before we vote? Okay. All in favor, please record your vote, aye. Those opposed, no. And that is six to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, the next item is item L one. Under zoning matters, Ms. Edmiston, consider a public hearing for proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding sign placement for public hearings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission was asked to consider an amendment to that zoning ordinance requiring, requirement for, or regarding sign placement for public hearings. This amendment would still require signs to be posted, but the event, that the signs are not placed, this noncompliance will not invalidate the application or ultimate actions taken by the planning commissioner board of supervisors. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on Monday, April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend an amendment to the zoning ordinance to reflect this stated change to the sign.
Okay, does any supervisor have any questions on this? We do need to take action with regards to a public hearing to this, for the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, so what is your pleasure?
Make a motion, do we take it to a public hearing?
It's been, it's been moved by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Matthews, to set a public hearing for our June regular meeting at six P.M. with regards to this matter. Any questions? All in favor, please record your votes, aye. Those opposed, no. And that's unanimous, six to zero. Okay, moving on to M, Department Agency Reports and Items of Consideration. The first one is from the Commonwealth Regional Council. Consider requests for a cash match for the Go Virginia Enhanced Capacity Building Grant Fund. Mr. Carter?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, in your packet tonight, you should have a letter from the CRC regarding that, uh, regional economic development organization we talked about during the budget season. They're going to be applying for a hundred thousand dollar in Go Virginia Enhanced Capacity Building Grant Funds to help for this business plan and creation of a regional economic development. The CRC is asking that all the localities in their area and the Longwood University provide a cash match of twenty-five hundred dollars for this grant request. CRC will be providing, providing ten thousand dollars of their own funding for this part of this grant as well. So, each locality providing twenty-five hundred dollars in Longwood, that would be, uh, twenty thousand dollars in funds. CRC is going to provide ten thousand dollars in funds, and we can also use in-kind services from the localities in Longwood to help make up a fifty thousand dollar match would be covered for this hundred thousand dollar grant they're applying for. So, what CRC is asking is you guys set aside twenty-five hundred dollars for this grant opportunity for this project. As I told you, in budget season, you do have an economic development reserve that you can take that twenty-five hundred dollars off if you choose to, so this would not be new funds, it would be using out of their reserve. Melanie Foster from CRC is joining us by Zoom, so she's here to answer any questions you might have that might be more specific than me and Supervisor Miles can answer.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Yes, Supervisor Matthews, you have a question, sir?
I understand the terminology and what we're doing here, and I don't mind making a motion to take the twenty-five hundred dollars out of our economic development fund line item, because we've got a pretty good chunk of change in there and moving forward with that. So, that's my motion to take it out of the twenty-five hundred dollar.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Supervisor Matthews, is there a second gentleman? Seconded by Supervisor Allen to, um, to allocate twenty-five hundred dollars for this request. Any questions, gentlemen? If not, please record your votes, aye. Those opposed, no.
What is this grant going to encompass? If they were to be rewarded, awarded this grant, what is that going to happen? What's going to happen with that?
Um, I think on your packet, it's saying, "The project elements include a business plan and strategic design, analysis of regional capabilities, conduct a market and demand analysis, conduct site and building inventory analysis, creation of a board and operational structure to include legal structure, development vision and goals and strategy framework, and develop budget and financial substantiality plan for three years, including fundraising and campaign framework." And also, I think in your packet is, she wanted to make clear that this is separate from the CRC. This is not a CRC entity, this is a separate organization.
This is a one-time fee, this twenty-five hundred dollars?
Yes, for this grant, yes, sir.
We're not committing ourselves to any other funding.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All right.
Thank you, Melanie, for joining us.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Sure.
Have a good evening. Next item is M two, Emergency Management Director Chief Cody Davis. Consider appropriation of return of locality funds in the amount of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-eight cents. M two. Okay, the motion is by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Matthews, to approve the request. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please record your vote, aye. Those opposed, no. And six to zero, it's unanimous. The next item is from the Emergency Management Department. Ms. Ryan Holland, EMS Coordinator, with regards to the Emergency Operations Plan. Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Holland? That was emailed to us a few days ago, that Emergency Operations Plan, and do we have to adopt that? Okay. So, we do need action on that, on the, on that Emergency Operations Plan that was sent to us.
So moved.
For a second? The motion by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Supervisor, uh, excuse me, Supervisor Allen, to adopt the E O P, Emergency Operations Plan.
Well, before you guys vote, I want to make sure, we're still reviewing it, so pending any, I would say, including your motion, pending any small type of graphical changes that we might have.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for that clarification. All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, please record your vote, aye. Those opposed, no. That's six to zero, unanimous. The next item is M four, consider an appointment, reappointment to the Library Board. Ms. Diane O'Brien is currently serving and is eligible for reappointment and would like to be reappointed. So, is there any action on that?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Davis, to reappoint Ms. O'Brien to the Library Board. Any questions? All in favor, please record your votes, aye. Those opposed, no. That's six to zero, unanimous. The next item is M five, with regards to consider continuing with the courthouse project, and there is an attachment in your packet with regards to that. Mr. Carter, did you want to?
Yeah, Emmett's not here tonight, so I'll go through. Emmett came before you last month and talked to you about the stuff they had found at the courthouse project. In your package tonight, he listed all of those items. He's asking tonight if you guys want to move forward with, uh, architectural partners, going through the process and bidding out and everything and having a project meeting. So, there will be the agency leading charge in this project. Emmett has showed on that first page of his letter all the things they found in the courthouse, so he's got some asbestos abatement, removing hazardous materials, containing sealants, twenty-one exterior window frame, mason relocations, repair, rework, rebuild window materials, and paint glazing, and install seal flashing, remove and reinstall portions of existing slate roof, repair the courthouse exterior missing, broken bricks, repointed bricks, fix mortar and joints, and repair downspouts. He's got to excavate that east alley between the courthouse and the clerks building and install a foundation drain along the length of the courthouse. As I think the committee saw some of the pictures he showed us, and there's a drainage issue with that water coming in, that little alleyway that's getting into the courthouse. He's got to repair expansion joints between the old courthouse and the later addition, clean interior wall materials and treat with biocide, and subsequently seal, encapsulate the material during the paint effort. Paint interior exterior elements, post remediation work, repair work, encapsulating the lead-based paint. He also has, following the building moisture infiltration remediation repairs and clean the HVAC equipment, including ducts, lines, and diffusers. Remove the site wall to the south of the main Route sixty entrance. Uh, remove the site wall to the south of the main route sixty entrance, starting the location of the previous collapsed rebuilt wall, as you remember years ago, if you're looking at the courthouse aside, too, the left collapsed, so we're having the same kinda issues about to start with the side on the right, so they're gonna, um, take that wall down and get it up properly, so it won't fall in the near future. Uh, but doing all that stuff, Emmett included a cost estimate for his services only. That was on. He's included a price of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, which would include his firm, uh, getting in contact and bidding this project out to get you, back to you, a list of possible bidders who could do, come in and do the work for this project. So all we're asking tonight is for you to allow Emmett and his firm to move ahead and go through with doing the bidding process and preparing, uh, contract documents and design plans, I'm sorry.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Carter?
It a hundred and thirty-eight thousand just for his part, too?
Sir, I got Kevin to make sure we pulled it up. We got nine hundred thousand set aside in that courthouse budget for these repairs.
Okay. And I know I was, uh, instructed to start digging for the, for some of this money that Thomas Jefferson left me, and I'm still digging, and I haven't, and I've just finding red clay, so I'll just keep going.
You're back there with your burden, won't you? Should know that.
You better get a little deeper then, boy.
Does anyone have any questions before we vote on this? Is there a motion? Supervisor Allen moved, and it's been seconded by Supervisor, uh, by Supervisor Bryant to continue, um, with the courthouse project. Does anyone have any questions before we vote?
Yes, I got one.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Davis.
This hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that he charges us, he's gonna go talk to all the bids from the contractors. He's gonna handle all that info.
Yes, sir, and he'll prepare the bid documents as well.
So we don't have to do nothing.
We're just supervis, supervising.
Okay, that's what I'll.
So when we get the bids in, we will have a committee meeting, and we can interview and decide which firm we wanna go with, but he'll be preparing all those documents.
Those in favor, please record your votes aye. Those opposed, no. Six to zero, unanimous. Thank you. The next item is M six from the Toga Volunteer Fire Department, a request for a county dumpster for the annual fundraising raffle for the weekend of May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion by, sorry?
I'm making a motion.
Okay. Okay, motion by Supervisor Davis, seconded by Supervisor Allen to approve the request. Any questions about the dumpster? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. That is unanimous. The next three items are from, uh, appropriations from, with, with, uh, requests from the sheriff's office. The first one is, uh, Department of Criminal Justice funds in the amount of one thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. They're requesting appropriation of that.
They're moved.
All right, motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Matthews to approve the appropriation. Any questions? All in favor, please record your votes aye. Those opposed, no. And that's, six to zero, unanimous. The next item is also from the sheriff's office, from the Department of, um, from D C J S, uh, with regards to, uh, one thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars as an appropriation.
They're moved.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Matthews to approve the request. Any questions? All in favor, please record your votes aye. Those opposed, no. That is unanimous. Uh, M nine from the sheriff's office, uh, they're, uh, consider appropriation for Department of Criminal Justice Services COVID supplemental funding of forty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, and there is a second by Supervisor Matthews to approve the request. All in favor, please record your votes aye. Those opposed, no. Six to zero, unanimous. Thank you. The next item is in, in the amended agenda, a request from Kenda Honeman with regards to House Bill twenty-two thirteen, uh, state, um, agency committee member, a request to waive fees and provide liability insurance for the May, for A May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the National Academy of Sciences to receive public input on House Bill twenty-two, um, thirteen. So that is added to the agenda. Um, she is a member of that study group, as am I, and, um, she is asking that.
I think she's joining us tonight, too.
Is Ms. Kenda Honeman with us? Let's see if we can.
Would you like me to speak, Jordan?
Um, if you would like, and then we'll pose questions, Ms. Honeman.
Yeah, it's, um, it was recommended by Supervisor Miles that we use the community center. I had asked if we could use the Peter Francisco Auditorium for this meeting, since it's with the National Academy of Sciences. And, uh, it was told that that wasn't, um, appropriate, but he really recommended the community center, so I spoke with, um, Administrator Carter, and he said that what you would need would be a letter from me asking to waive, uh, the fees, and I guess the insurance for us to use the community center. So that's what I'm asking tonight, if you would please provide that waiver.
All right, any supervisor have any questions? So I serve on that committee also, and, um, I, I do think the board of supervisors meeting room wouldn't be conducive just because there's more parking, there's more space, and it's after hours over at the community center, and there is a fee, and, um, I think, and that, and it's been told to us that the National Academy of Sciences, um, and more than likely Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy, um, they have budgets, and so I think that they would be okay to pay that fee at the community center, so I won't support the request. Any supervisor have any questions?
I do, Mr. Miles.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Matthews.
Ms. Ha, Ms. Honeman, how many hours are you talking about using this facility?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you very well. Could you say that again?
How many hours are you, are you thinking you're gonna need this facility?
Well, I was going to apply for it from six to ten P M. We may not need it that long, but, uh, at least until nine.
Okay, well, you know, we charge, I think, by the hour, is that right, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
And how many people are you talking about having there? How many?
We are hoping for about a hundred.
And i, is there a condition in that for so many people? I mean?
We are running very short on time, as this is supposed to happen May the twenty-fifth.
Well.
Yes, sir.
I'd have to, I agree with Mr. Miles. I don't, you know, if it's, if y'all have a budget and you got two or three organizations that can help fund this, this is a very small amount of money that you're talking about, and if it's in your budget, I think that, uh, it would be something that you could absorb, or, uh, since it is such a small amount. So anyway, we're, you know, this building, we, you know, we renovated it, and we checked around in other localities, and we're actually cheaper than a lot of people, uh, that do the same thing, and, you know, we need to help pay for this and relieve some of that pressure for the taxpayers, uh, since we did renovate it, so that's kinda how the county looks at this scenario.
So does any other supervisor have a question or comment? So there's gonna be no action? Okay. So there was no action.
I have no budget. I'm not involved at all. I'm trying to help the National Academy of Sciences because they haven't been able to have any, uh, contact, apparently. I was told that she had tried to reach the county repeatedly and not gotten response. So i, if it needs to go to the National Academy of Sciences, I mean, that's not my job or anything else. I was just hoping that I might be able to facilitate, since I'm here in the county, and in communication with Supervisor Miles.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Honeman. So now we're gonna move to.
You're welcome.
In county attorney matters. Mr. Wright, do you have anything, sir? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wright. The next item on our agenda is item O, the county administrator's report. Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item Scott covered for, for, uh, VDOT, so I will be getting that letter to him to get those, uh, traffic signs or speed signs put up. Um, I think that's a great idea that he said they'd be interested in doing it, so they might be helping with the costs on those as well. Um, the second item I have is an item that I've been approached by a couple of board members about. Uh, we have some citizens with some tires on their property, um, and when I say tires, I don't mean like ten or fifteen, they're in the hundreds, I'm getting two thousand, so, uh, for stuff that size, we've been referring to D Q. Uh, D Q, as you know, kinda moves at their own pace, so as you all begin calls about how, you know, they reporting these incidents, and nothing's happening, so we got together with the county attorney, and we talked about, you know, the county having a policy that would speed that process up some. Um, Mr. Wright has identified a state law section ten dot one dash one four one eight, uh, two, which is called improper disposal of tires exemption penalty, and the summary of that statute says it's illegal to have more than a hundred tires on your property. It's a misdemeanor to have more than a hundred tires on your property. It's a felony to have more than five hundred tires on your property, and of course, in that statute, there's also exemptions for convenience centers and salvage yards, so. Mission of this board, me and county attorney will still get together and come back with a policy for you guys, so that we can have something with teeth in it to turn over to the sheriff's department when we get these complaints, so we won't have to wait on D Q to take action.
Do you, um, need action on that, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions before we vote? Yes, sir, Supervisor Matthews.
In the form of a motion?
Yes.
They're moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
The motion is by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to move forward with the said policy. Any questions on that? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. That's six to zero, unanimous. Does that, anything else?
The only other thing I have is, uh, members, Chief Davis came to you last month about the Apex grant. That money did come in, so we received that fifty thousand dollars for that equipment, so that's some good news that we can share with you guys and not ask for anything, but we got some money delivered to us today.
Awesome.
Great, the board's very grateful to Apex for that. Okay, under item P, informational items, you have those four items, and then I would highlight on P four, St. Thomas Aquinas Seminary is inviting us to an open house May fourteenth. Are there any other board matters, gentlemen?
I got one thing I wanna say.
Yes, sir, Vice Chairman Chambers.
Um, in defense of Ms. Edison, um, I brought Mr. Bowe right here. She sat there and went on, detailed the detail, told him what he had to do, so she, she had one way, tried to help him.
And I met with him numerous times, and I know you have done a lot to help him.
He told, he told her, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna say he told her lie, but he told her untruth. I'm gonna be Christian tonight, because she have helped him every way she could. I brought him right here, and she asked you anything else you need to, you know, you don't understand, I understand, so now he claiming you don't, so that don't add up.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Yes, I just wanna bring up something real quick.
Yes, sir, Supervisor Davis.
And I, I meant to do it in announcements, but, uh.
Sure.
Our community lost a great businessman yesterday, Mr. Robert O'Brien, did on Buckingham Branch Railroad. He passed away yesterday evening.
I told you I thought he dropped dead.
Had a heart attack. A, a good man all around and a big pillar of the community, and I just wanna say my prayers and thoughtful with his family as they going through this, so.
Absolutely.
Would you like, um, yeah, that's really sad news. He was big into anti-litter and such a good businessman. Do you want to do a, um, resolution and memoriam for him? And his family?
Boy, it's a pleasure. I would like to.
Yeah.
Want to move that?
I second it. Go on, move it on, Davis.
Okay, the motion has been made by, uh, Supervisor Davis, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers, to prepare a resolution and memoriam presentation for the family of Robert, uh, Robert E. Bryant. Any questions? All right. Are we ready, Ms. Lane? Okay. Those in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is unanimous. Okay, um, if there are no other board members, we do have, need to go into executive closed session. Is there a motion to that effect? Vice Chairman Chambers.
Yes, sir. Discussion is consideration, accusation of real property for the purpose, public purpose, or the, uh, disposition of the public here, real property, where discussion and open meeting would be adversely affected, debarking position and negotiating strategy of the public body. Um, two point two dash three seven, uh, eleven point eight point three point.
A motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Matthews, to enter into closed session under said code provision. Any questions? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Of all the supervisors voting. And that's unanimous, six to zero, we will enter into closed session. We need to return to regular session and certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only business matters related to the codes of which were identified in the executive meeting were. So is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Allen, to return to open session. Any questions? All in favor, please record your votes aye. Those opposed, no. That is six to zero. Thank you. Next item is item T, action as a result of closed session. Supervisor Matthews.
Yes, sir. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion. I move that the Board of Supervisors hold a public hearing pursuant to one five dash one five dot two dash one eight zero zero of the Code of Virginia at 6:00 PM at its June meeting to hear public comments on the county selling certain real property described as containing 125.275 acres more or less and 114.47 acres and point zero, zero point eight, zero four acres being shown on the preliminary plats by Maxi and Associates PC. Those plats being dated March 14th, 2022. One entitled Survey of Division of Tax Parcel Number 138 dash 15 and the other entitled Division and Boundary Line Adjustment. The other 10 acres more or less is the land between the two parcels shown on the two referenced plats and is part of the tax parcel 138 dash 15. County staff shall cause notice of such unions to be appropriately given.
So there's a motion. Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Motion by Supervisor Matthews and seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers with regards to the hearing that is set to be advertised for stated properties. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your votes aye. Those opposed, no. Okay. And that is four to two. So the motion carries. Any other business? If not, we will adjourn our meeting.